Okay. Dan, would you hand me the recorder? Please and thank you. Folder one, is that okay Pam? Folder one. Okay. We will call the October 18th Village of Lava Board of Trustees Meeting to Orser. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing on the agenda is approval of our September 6th, 2017 regular meeting minutes.
Mayor?
Yes. It's not 5:00 PM yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So yes, I did. You're welcome. But thanks for keeping me on my toes. At 5:00 PM we will open the public hearing for the water rate increase.
The only typo I see is it's Dave Giver and not Dan Giver.
Oh, yep, present. Dave Giver would be right with members present.
This is Dan Giver, that was Dave Giver.
Wait to catch that, I did not catch that. Anything else? Make a motion to approve the minutes with the correction of the first name of Mr. Giver.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. Uh, we have to, um, approve our special meeting minutes from September 27th, 2017.
I'll make that motion there.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Thank you Charlie. Approval of the vouchers.
The vouchers. General fund. A motion to approve it and the amount of $71,291.31. Water fund, $104,066.12. Sewer fund, $188,040.57. Trust and agency, $26,339.09. And capital fund, $224 and I move on with those.
I second it.
Thank you Charlie, thank you Ed.
I have one question.
Yep.
On the sewer fund. I know Tom, Pat and I talked. Number 392. Uh, final payment. We talked about all that. Did that? Is that? Did that get held back?
We did. Yep.
Okay.
We held back an additional, additional $5,000.
We didn't pay to build a prayer again, right?
I mean that's just, was just as long as everything comes back in the spring the way it should. I'm okay with it then now, I just want to make sure that got held back. This one right here.
Yep, no, um, Dan's asking about another one.
No.
I don't see it in here either, Dan.
Got one more?
Prayer.
Don't pay it.
Well, that would have been, probably been in general fund.
Yep. So we're looking, but it's not in there, so we're good. Okay, so there is a motion by Charlie, a second by Ed, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Unfinished business. Five Streets Utility Reconstruction Project.
I can speak to that mayor. I met last week in Geymouth's office and we went over the Five Streets with Mike Churchill and Kevin Bayman. Few things that we added, deleted, few more catchphrases here, just some modifications. They are well on their way to, um, having that ready for submission to D E C and D O H for their review and approval. Um, you and I still have to meet with the groups that we need easement, um, as we discussed this afternoon.
Yep.
Few more additional easement properties.
Anything else?
No, we've covered it all.
What about, uh... Are we gonna have to have it ready to go to bid pretty quick if we're gonna lose all the good contractors?
I guess to carry on then from what Tom mentioned. So our plan is to submit to the D O H and D E C end of November, a little more than a month from now. Solicit their comments, appropriate their revisions into our drawings, have the drawings ready to bid. Depending upon how quick they get back to us and the extent of their comments, but we're hoping by the end of May, early February, so we can be ready for the contractors. Open bids the first of March, be able to make a board first we can be ready. That's our plan.
Okay. Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades. Phase one agreement. Um, is the only thing listed under phase one. I know that that has gone back and forth.
Thinking it's all tweaked up now, but, uh, subject to, uh, it was a typo that was just recently corrected, uh, but that was the only comment we received back, so I'm thinking it's final. Yeah, under, or wait till public comment.
Go ahead.
We got it. And this is on behalf of the Senior Vice President at our Corporate Government Affairs, Colonel Mullin. So Kraft Heinz is proud of the $100 million dollar plus investment we've made over the past year to expand and modernize our cheese and dairy facility in Lawville, which recently added 125 new jobs. For the past several months, our factory has used slug remodel, has used the slug remodel in aeration upgrades at the Village of Lawville's sewer treatment facility. Kraft Heinz is working with the village to determine our portion of these sewer expansion activity costs, and soon we'll be submitting our signed portion of the agreement related to this reimbursement. And by soon, this was drafted this afternoon, but I now have it. This could be as fast as soon could be Kraft's signed agreement.
For phase one?
This is signed?
If you could sign that and send us back a copy, I'd appreciate that.
Brian, I think you need to come back here.
No, not on camera.
I really wanna give you a hug right now.
That's signed by us today. Maybe mine's still going on.
Smear it.
No, hand put that in the safe.
Well, you need to sign.
Well, I need to have it notarized.
So whenever you get the notary, send us back the...
Unless anybody hears a notary, I'm happy to do it right now.
Whether I have my stamp or not, I can write all the information out.
I'd be happy to sign it. Amen. Thank you. Oh, I feel much better about all that now. Okay. Onto phase two.
So, I guess I can talk about that one too. Mr. Tubalino was here from Geymouth. Um, we've, we've reported this a couple of times, we've gone over the 50% submissions. We have a meeting Friday this week to go over submission, pre-submission to D E C for their review, um, of the phase two wastewater treatment plant upgrades. And I don't know if there's any more to add.
Just one thing, we're going to E F C. Excuse me for review two, D E C and E F C. So be combined, combined review effort on their parts.
And while we're at the reviews, we're gonna submit Friday, the 27th for Planning Board as well. So Planning Board meeting is November 6th.
Okay.
So if you recall, the village typically does not have to submit for planning board review, but we decided to do it as an exercise for our planning board, um, to go through the, from start to finish, the process of planning board, typical planning board review. So Geymouth are gonna do that with our resource.
Okay. So the planning board meeting will be just the initial review of the application to make sure we have everything complete. After that will be the public hearing.
Yes.
Just while we're on this topic, Tom and I were having a discussion today in regard to finances, um, and I guess future financing of the phase two, as well as the Five Streets project and, and everything that may be coming to the future. Um, and Ed was there as well, right, for this part of the conversation. So I'm wondering if we would like to possibly call a special meeting of some sort with, Geymouth to be there, possibly with cost, E F C to be there with, um, what grants we have, as well as what the, the financing is through them. Jeff from Municipal Solutions to be there and really figure out what the costs are per year on these upgrades, so we really have a good black and white understanding of what we're looking at, um, for the future of our users on our system. I think that we've all, we've gotten through a couple of, um, I shouldn't call it more stressful moments, but we've gotten through a couple of, um, needy situations with our infrastructure. And I think that this is a good time to possibly take care of some of these questions that I think a lot of us have, um, as well as I'm sure Pam with the budget and, and things of that nature, just so we can get a much better understanding. I don't know if all five of us will be able to coordinate that. I think it would be great if, you know, and, and also to include the municipal board if anybody would like to attend. I think it'd be a great brainstorming session, um, that we really should have, and I think the more ears we have, the better it is and, um, you know, people might understand things a little differently, but that way we're not always trying to catch somebody up of, of what happened. I don't know if that's something you all are interested in, but I think that that should happen maybe within the next month or so.
I think that's a good idea, Mayor.
Thoughts?
Think it's a real good idea. We're talking about an awful lot of, um, awful lot of things going on at the same time and we're talking about a lot of money.
Correct.
And I think we need to make sure that we're gonna be able to do these things without being strapped.
I agree entirely.
I think you covered it all, I think all you, all you need to do is determine the meeting.
Right? And see if the other parties are available for those times.
We'd wanna just do a brainstorming amongst ourselves and come up with some numbers. I'm thinking that we also need to talk with, like, Jeffle, Schumer.
Well, I think if we, I...
But wait until we get some actual numbers.
I think what we need to do is we need to have someone come with a packet, brand new packet. This is what we have. This is the grant we have. This is the 0% we have. This is how much this portion is gonna be, this is how much this portion... Brand, I mean, I have a book of meeting minutes and handouts that we've had where my three-inch binder is tipping open now. I would almost really prefer to just start fresh and say, this is, okay, this date at the top, this is our meeting date, and let's, let's move on from here and let's digest our information. You know? And, and obviously if we have a special meeting, I don't think it's anything that would be an executive session discussion, it's us.
I think that Jeff Smith should be there, Municipal Solutions. I hope that he doesn't run the meter on us anymore, I think we're paying him a good price and have a good, after his input and hopefully he's decent, we're paying him, of course.
So I will work on that over the next couple of weeks and see if there might be even an afternoon time, um, during the workday possibly, for everyone to be able to meet. Does that sound okay for people?
Yeah, we'll make ourselves available. Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. I guess I'm ready for the next step to be able to process a little bit more. Pipeline. I know that D E C had approval come through. Anything on the pipeline?
Um, we just did a pay requisition, um, as, as part of these, um, and Joe brought up, Joe's watching the bottom line, and we did retain an additional $5,000 from Highlander for site restoration, with the idea that they did some work late in the summer, while everything took off in the spring with all the rain, everything was growing nicely, then we had our little drought session and nothing grew. And so they came back and they did a little bit of work late fall, and we just wanna make sure everything is gonna be great in the spring, particularly the hillside, um, on River Road, or River Street. Wanna make sure that really takes hold, so we don't have any washouts. We did also provide Mr. Byer two trees for the ones that have got damaged during the constru-, during construction.
We do have phase one agreement signed, and I also know that the connection to the pipeline is something that needed to be approved, um, on Kraft's end, I believe that's happened.
So we received notification from D E C, a copy, we were copied in on it, Kraft was sent a response letter from D E C, um, and they're gonna do all the modifications or recommendations that D E C had. And so as, as soon as those are, are tied in and, and we're aware and they're tested, and, I mean, we're ready to turn that line on. I know both of the meters were, have been calibrated.
Okay. Anything else?
The other items that Joe, Tom and I talked about, the hole behind the bank property back in Valley View, the tile rod, Highlander's gonna get out there next week and take care of that. That'll, unless something else develops, that'll probably be it for them until spring and the grass comes up and it's maintained for our spec, then at that point we'll come back with, with should be the final pay requisition for the 7,500 that we're retaining right now. They are looking to hopefully get this pay requisition signed, so they can get the money that they submitted for.
Then the other thing that we talked about, Pat, was getting a survey of the parcel that is now owned by the village, an actual survey map of it, rather than just a deed.
The little corner that's back in.
It's always nice to have a map of the property that you own, because in 15 years when the superintendent's looking at a deed, he may or may not know where that is, but if he's got a map, he can certainly locate it. So that's something that I put in to Geymouth and hopefully prepare for us with this board recommendation for our approval.
We need to, do we need to make a motion for that?
I don't think so, I think it's...
Okay. Number three, road, Wind Project Road Agreement.
Well, this was tabled for the last meeting, there's a couple of revisions that need to be done for the road agreement, but we haven't received it yet, some was on just for monitoring purposes. I don't think you're going to see much on it until, uh, some progress gets made on some of the issues around seeing the roadmap project. This is kind of, uh, you know, we have quite the same priority as resolving some of the issues such as once we've been reading about the paper with forecom and so on, so, well, I think we keep it on the agenda so we don't lose track of it, and there's probably not gonna be a lot to report for a while.
Thank you, Mark. D P W C S E A contract.
Well, we're probably about, uh, I think about 95% there. We reviewed stuff last week, uh, the D P W had a vote Monday and they approved it. Right now, the stage it's in is, uh, got a rough draft back Friday, checked it out, there was a couple corrections needed to be made, uh, they were sent back and we're just waiting for the final draft to come back, and once the final draft come back, we plan on forwarding it to Mark for his approval, and then we can make the motion and be done with it.
Yay.
I don't know if we wanna go to the point tonight of making a motion to accept it, pending Mark's approval or not, it would probably save a couple of weeks, because I'm assuming it'll show up, the final draft this week.
You can do that if you're comfortable with that.
I'll make the motion.
I would second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
One abstention. I just mean that way we're not running into another whole 30 days on this.
Okay, thank you. J T L Forestry Timbercut, um, I think that we would ask for an executive session for that. Forest Avenue Property Ownership.
Following last meeting, I sent you a summary of what I had since that time I had thought, um, and we found some old documents and suggested that, that, uh, our Forest Avenue had been leased on a yearly basis for a period of time. Also suggested it was leased for road purposes at that time, but I, they're all 30, 40 years old at least, and I don't have any more recent than that, so...
67.
67, yeah, some of them went back to the 30s and...
67 years old.
Oh, 67 years old, yeah. The, uh, so, um, I still don't have anything more recent that suggests that it's a road for you, it certainly hasn't been on the inventory of highways, and the inventory of highways goes back to like 50s, I believe.
I looked back into the Kingsmore Highway and the 80s, and it wasn't listed.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be who was to, uh, have National abstract do a cool search, or at least get, get a price for them to see how much it might be to do that, so we could put this to rest?
Certainly you could, uh, do that. I mean, we pulled the source deeds for all the properties along that stretch, and we reviewed those. There's no indication of a road there in any of the deeds, but that doesn't mean that there isn't maybe something else that National would find. Uh, you know, pulling the source deeds is not the same as doing a full abstract type search, but you probably know a few hundred dollars from that, but it's up to you, it's up to you.
I would just say again, I quizzed our D P W, the former foreman, Mike Ward, and he just retired after 30 years and hasn't said right to me, and I asked him several times that they never plowed the road. And he, he was here for 30 years.
I believe that there was a case at one time when I was the mayor, where somebody got a ticket for something on that road, and it was thrown out of court because...
It wasn't a village street?
But I can't substantiate.
I think we've, we've never plowed it, we've never maintained it.
According to John Urina, you did. John said that, uh, the village did plow that street. And I think John lived there longer than 20 years, or 30 years. Then I asked him about it.
I can also tell you that when I was the mayor, Brian Sealy, the plant manager, approached me and said he wanted the village to take ownership of that street, and I, my remark to him was, if you can write up a synopsis for me to present to the board, that would, that would say why it would be to our advantage to do such, I'd be glad to present it. And there was never anything written up, because it would, I think, been crazy for us to take ownership of something that we'd have to maintain.
Well, I know he plowed it, because I lived in a brown block right in front of apartments, and the village plowed it coming along off that street, and we hit the front driveway where I parked.
My guess is somebody did it.
We do that, I, we do, we weigh in on...
Anybody that you want.
All side streets. Yes, we do. And, and I'm not joking, I mean, when you come around the corner, you have to dump that snow someplace.
I can attest to that.
So it goes into the first person's property.
It's just something you live in.
But that's not, that's not the point.
We do live in the...
It was the fact that it was a village plow that was coming off that street and it plowed it.
So I guess what would we wish to do?
In the old days, it may not have been...
Do we wish to do a, a search?
But I mean, these are all factual issues, of course, that, you know...
Right.
But if you wanted to see what the record search would show, National would be the place to go.
I think what I would like to maybe see is, we find out first what, what Mr. Massachusetts could want for a, for a price to do the search.
Deed.
Yeah, and I'd be glad to talk to him.
Okay.
Seeing how I appreciate the issue.
That's fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to him.
Okay.
Well, and I, I believe we should put this thing to rest officially, but all the other things we've talked about is basically hearsay.
Yes.
To do this the right way and pay the money and get it cleared up, find, once and for all, makes good sense to me.
Do we wanna authorize up to a certain amount this evening, or do we wanna...
Yeah, get a...
Let me back with a price down, I'll do that.
Yeah, there's no huge rush, but for at least 30 years.
Good snow in a month, folks.
Oh, please. Bite your tongue. Okay, so you'll get a fee on that, Dan, and we'll move along from there.
Mr. Murphy brought up a good point, if we have a price, not to exceed that.
If we're linking Lewis, they'd be able to set us price. It's not good negotiations.
Whenever you do something to exceed, I can see though you're...
Lava Fire Hall. Think we would ask for an executive session later for that as well. Village Water Filtration System. It's working, we're full. Amen again.
Smiling, so it's working. We had a couple, you know, we've had a couple of issues, um, with the actual trailer unit itself, the, uh, Paul has come up and they've done it, fixed it, they've been up a couple of times, um, to fix the same problem, and finally they said, we're done with this, they took the whole piece out and they put a brand new one in and repaired it. They got, they got tired of coming up and fixing a very similar issue they were having with one piece of brand new equipment, so they just took it out and put it online.
Okay. I think I saw it's filtering around 700,000 gallons per day for us, is that right?
Yeah, up to 800, yeah. We have it timed out then for 800, but we can get a million.
And the other beds are being cleaned and redone as we speak, I assume, don't know that for sure, but... Proposed Z B A amendment to zoning law. You not have that in front of me. Be very honest. Yeah, I know. You have it there, Pam? You have any chance? Tom, you wanna give us a little update on that? Amendment to the zoning law?
Can you refresh my memory?
Yeah, um, review intermunicipal, intermunicipal cooperation agreement with the county, Lewis Coats Department.
No.
Sorry, the lot.
It's a yellow piece.
It's the lot, right?
Just take one yellow piece.
Is it in regard to the lot?
It had to do with changing the description. We added a description for means of access or address to the law and we added some wording to the definition of a lot.
Continuous and obstructed way of travel from any point in a building or facility that provides an accessible route to an area of refuge or public road. Sample a driveway. All tax map parcels that comply in terms of dimension or size for the zoning law shall be considered to be separate lots, subject to their owner providing proof to the contrary. And this came about because of a property owner wishing to subdivide a lot. And even though the frontage of that lot, and correct me if I'm wrong, was essentially facing one street, there was not necessarily enough room to put a driveway in.
You know, what it was, was there was two tax parcels.
Yeah.
It was all one, it was being sold by the previous owner standing on both of them.
Yeah.
Well, you had to come across the one parcel to get to the other and that's where he wanted to put his driveway. And the homeowner was questioning and the zoning officer was questioning going across one property to get to the other one he needed up. So we made it so that that's no longer necessary to get approval to go over your own piece of property.
Even though they were two parcels?
Even though they're two parcels.
They were owned by the same person.
Correct.
New definition of means and access.
And the zoning officer asked us to define means of access.
Has your, has your ZBA had a chance to review this since Mark typed it up?
They, I had it handwritten and it was in our notes that we approved it, so.
Okay.
It was in the notes and I'm not going to get it, it was such a quick add.
If you're ready to proceed with it, the next step would be to set up a...
Public hearing. Anybody have any other questions or need for future, or further conversation before possibly setting a public hearing? Do you think it makes sense?
Yep.
People have right of ways across other people's sides of properties all the time. So I would make a motion to set a public hearing at our November board meeting.
Fifteenth.
Yep, November fifteenth.
I'll second that.
Should we set it at 5:00 PM? Since that's when most people are out of work. To approve this or to discuss and possibly approve this, change the zoning law. I agree. Okay.
Could we vote on the second?
Oh, sorry. Did I make the motion? Who made the second?
I did.
Joe did?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved. Proposed water rate increase. That is something that we will discuss in twenty more minutes. Everybody's okay with that? Charter Communications has sent us a franchise renewal, which used to be Time Warner. I'm assuming this is a regular thing.
This is a new agreement?
Yeah.
Well, this is what they're proposing. You know, you have the ability to talk to them about it. They're sort of, but since the deregulation, the cable industry years ago, where you can negotiate in this at some point, isn't it? But there's still parts that you can leave, return, you know, franchise fee, that sort of thing. If you have service issues with them, it's not a bad time to discuss it with them. So there are those sort of things that you can go over. But Public Service Commission provides a great tool for signing up these days as well.
Have you looked, had a chance to look this over?
Well, I just, I just got it today, but the, I wish, I think I had, I might have had it earlier. But it's similar to what we did in all the other communities. I don't think there's anything different about yours than we see in other communities.
I got a question on, like, when it comes up, the payment. Is that set in our agreement, what we're going to get per customer?
It's, it's a percentage. And it's based on basic cable services. It's not based on premium channels. It's not based on other services they provide such as internet or telephone. It's based just on your basic cable. And then it's a percentage of whatever the gross revenues are from that.
Can they raise that anytime they feel like it?
The rate?
On the franchise fee as well?
No, the franchise fee is settled in the agreement.
Because the reason I ask that question is since Spectrum took over Time Warner Cable, they have raised the franchise fee here in the village twice since January.
But, okay, but here's the thing. If my basic cable costs a hundred dollars, I'm just making it up right here. And, and the franchise fee is three percent, then the franchise fee is three dollars. If I raise my basic cable to two hundred dollars, then my franchise fee is going to be two, it's going to be six dollars. Still three percent. It's not a different number. So I don't know if the franchise fee has changed because they changed what they charge for basic cable, but the actual percentage should not have changed because that's established in the agreement.
I know the cable rates have, the basic has gone up.
And that's probably why you've seen a change in the franchise fee because it's now three percent of a larger number.
Is this something that we would have to sign as the village and send back? Yes.
There's nothing you have to sign yet. All you need to do is schedule a public hearing, the rule of the franchise fee if you're so inclined. And I don't think it's anything that's so pressing that you have to do it tonight if you want more time to learn.
I don't think it comes due for 2018 anyway. This, I mean.
But 2018's anyway.
Yeah, I know it's not far.
I think we ought to do it the same night.
I think so too.
Get it out of the way.
And Mark, you could maybe review it in between and we can all look at it. So, make a motion to set public hearing for agreement of the franchise, this franchise agreement between the village of Lawville and Time Warner Cable Northeast LLC for November fifteenth at 5:00 PM as well.
I'd immediately follow the...
Okay, immediately follow the zoning change.
Now, I'll second.
Thank you, Ed. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Housing authority, sweeping and standing services. That is something we do every year and it is in here. We would need your permission to sign that on behalf of the village.
Did that go up this year?
It did. Five percent.
Did they go up five percent? I just mean, I, I think it should go up because our costs have gone up.
Yep. Any other questions or discussion?
No, I'll make the motions while I'm maybe signing.
Thank you, Charlie. Is there a second? Thank you, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Want to abstain?
Oh.
I'm on their board, so I...
You're on their board, yes, sorry. Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, now I have other new businesses not on here since we have a few extra minutes. We had...
Oh, okay.
Oh, go ahead.
I had a couple things for new business.
Sure, you want to go ahead? Go for it.
Someplace. Yeah, two things really. Number one, as Mark said, it's getting late in the year and he's planning on retiring in June. I think we need to send out an RFP for attorneys and I have a listing from Mark and I think I gave a copy to Pam on, for four. But I just think we should get that RFP out and start talking to people because I feel we should have a new attorney onboard by Mark so he's got at least three or four months to work with Mark. So when Mark leaves, everything flows evenly and we don't have any problems. So I would like to make a motion that we send out RFPs for a new lawyer. I'd be glad to second that, Joe.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Then the other question I have is, here a while back, we did a no two truck law down on East State Street and Ross Road. And that does not seem to be working out. I'm not sure if it's a signage problem, but, or not, but I'm almost wondering if we'd be better off to totally throw that law out and rewrite it to the respect that we put a weight limit on it, but we put the weight limit on only East State Street and leave Ross Road completely off and have the weight limit go from the corner of Basswick out here to Ridges' Corners. I just, I talked to the police department and they say they're having a hard time enforcing it. So I'm just thinking a weight limit would be the simplest way to, and just throw this law completely out and leave Ross Road off. But I'm just throwing that out, something to be, think about.
What would your weight limit be? And how do we weigh the trucks to know what they're...
Oh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think all the police officers pull them over, they just look at the registration that's right there.
Cross the way, it's on the registration.
Combined weight, whether they got a trailer or a truck. Combined weight, if they're over in a combined weight, you're over whatever one it is. You don't have to have scales.
I was thinking maybe twenty ton, but that's open for discussion.
What would twenty ton eliminate?
It'd definitely eliminate all your tractor trailers.
If they're empty?
You can't even put the tractor across there without a trailer.
One big thing I'll tell you that we had on this road, we had a lot of people coming in with single axle dump trucks that are just following firewood, pointing off their example. We were telling, are they allowed to take it? Aren't they allowed to take it? Everybody stop is local traffic unless you're following from point A to point B. Everybody's phone, they just haven't got gas or the bush is...
So what, what Joey, you're saying is by eliminating the Ross Road, we're giving them an escape route?
Yep.
And so there won't be any excuses.
And we rebuilt that road and that road will take heavy trucks on the lower end anyway. And I'm hoping the town built their end just as good before it got turned over to us. I just mean, I've been hearing all summer long that this is not working and I constantly see them trucks go, so I'm just thinking, it isn't working, so we need to do something.
Will that affect our local workers with their cement trucks or anything of that nature?
Somewhat, I would think, yes.
We...
But there's other ways they can get around to it.
Can't, can't pay for it.
Or like I said, just totally eliminate it. I just don't think it's, it's not working.
We don't, we can't afford...
The way it's written on the books, it's not working.
We can't afford to have every road in this community for trucks to run for commerce because it's our true responsibility to rebuild them without any assistance from sales, tax, or anything like that. And the chip's money isn't going to take care of it. So, I mean, if somebody wants all these roads open, outside of the GoJanni up, but I think our obligation is to do as taxpayer right now.
If you guys want to, you know, take a, to the next meeting to think about it, I mean, it's been this long, it's not, no, no, it's not going to hurt to wait another meeting, but I just think we need to do something.
I think we need to lock from a, from a financial standpoint, but I like, I like the idea you come up with, Joe. And I think we got to, when we take care of it, I'd like to see everybody, the stakeholders sign off so that there's no question afterwards, in other words, the police department, the board, and everybody agrees to whatever we determine we do.
I agree. Why don't we think about it for a little bit? I need to educate myself on tonnage of trucks. Understand this a little bit better and then we can certainly go from there. I think your idea of East State Street to Basswick Street is a very good idea. We have a, we have a weight limit on Clinton Street.
Yep.
You know, I think that's ten thousand, isn't it?
Fifty.
Or, is it fifteen?
Or maybe it's only five.
Five tons.
That's five tons.
Five tons? So, okay. Thank you.
And do we want to, let's see. That'll come up later. Oh, I'm good.
Okay. I wanted to inform all of you that Charlie Truax, myself, and Judge De Phone had a few interviews two weeks ago, I believe. A half ago. And we have made a selection for an associate justice. And I would like to make that appointment this evening, which would be David Soller. He is interested in running for election in the spring. The idea was that we would have an individual working under Rich until he retired in the spring. He is willing to take that role. He has a very extensive background in corrections and security and different things. Do you either, do you want to add anything?
No, his qualifications as far as law enforcement and working within law agencies was one of the best things about his resume that we look at.
His references came back with very positive remarks.
Absolutely.
And so I, I would like to make that appointment.
You're making that a motion?
Making that a motion, yes.
Be happy to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We also did have another individual who would be a great candidate. I spoke to that individual and she would be more than willing, if Mr. Soller did win the election in the spring and serve a four-year term, she would be more than willing to be his associate justice. So, I think on-the-job training is going to be very crucial. You know, that I asked Attorney Gibbo's office, he can certainly, I believe, train with Judge De Phone, cannot hold court himself or, or do anything of that nature. So, the other thing is, is we would need to send him to training, which is first week in December. He is more than willing to attend that training as well. I don't know if we need a motion or anything for that.
You should approve Saturday notice of the training.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The other question I do have, you know, Rich did not always charge the village when he would come in to train with Judge Urina. There is an hourly rate that they're charged, that they're able to charge. Do we wish to pay that hourly rate as he's here training or do we wish to pay him when he is here doing arraignments and such? I know that... I know that Judge De Phone and Judge Irina would alternate court nights, yet both of them are both here working. I guess I'm just asking what our expectations are and what we see as how this-
What have we done in the past?
We've paid whatever they put down on their timesheet. So. You know, there's so much for an arraignment, so much for a, I don't know. And then a complete-
Complete, going through a complete trial.
Trial. And then there's an hourly rate that we also pay.
I think it just consists of what we've done in the past and it's what my market would do.
Okay. All right. So thank you. I think that you will be very impressed and very pleased. He's also a very level-headed individual, which I think is a positive asset to have in that situation, so. The other appointment I would like to make this evening would be for Joe Monnet to continue serving on the housing authority. His term actually expired this past March. He's still been serving as the chairman. So I'm hoping that we could reappoint him for another five-year term, which would be through March 31st of 2022. He's willing to continue. I told him he didn't have to serve the full five years, but that's usually what we do, just to make sure we don't have everybody completed at once.
I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. You made the motion. No, I'll second it. I apologize. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then the last one would be Dave Giver is an individual who came to one of our board meetings interested in serving on a village board. He has requested the municipal board. I gave him the option of planning our municipal board. And his term would be through December 31st of 2017 because he is filling in a current term. And then at that point, we can certainly reappoint him for the next five years if that's something that fits his fancy. So I would make that motion to appoint Dave Giver until December 31st, 2017.
I'll second.
Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
You still have an alternate opening on that board?
We still have an alternate on the municipal board and the planning board. And I believe I have both of them confirmed, but I have not actually talked with them. We've emailed, but I want to be sure before I make those appointments. Okay. So, we do have, we'll move on to correspondence before we open the public hearing.
May I bring up one thing on the new business?
Absolutely.
I don't even know if it's really new business. We had a terrible storm on Sunday evening and a large pine tree or evergreen, whatever you want to call it, fell up on North State Street. And the state's municipal, or the state DOT has four hours to respond. Our DOT went out and took care of that within the first hour and worked on it with six of the eight men that they have employed. Correct me, Tom, is it six? Six of the eight men employed there with the other two, the only reason they weren't there was they were on duty that night to flush the hydrants, so. Otherwise, truck traffic and that would have been even more compromised. And so I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. The other thing too I should probably bring up is that the ceremony at the corner this past weekend.
Weekend before.
Sorry, two weekends ago, thank you. Time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah.
Was a very positive experience. Community is very excited, very energetic. Certainly, the village, the Lions Club, the committee, the DPW, those who donated their time and energy to make that possible. And finances were all acknowledged. And I think it's something that we can be extremely proud of. So that's a wonderful, wonderful experience to have that almost complete. On that note, I'm working on some informational signs for the corner. And the welcome sign to possibly redo those for the village. I have been playing a little bit of phone tag with Mr. Gleason at school, who does graphic design with some of his students. And I, I guess I'm asking your permission to reach out to him to see if students might have an idea of how to do these things or lay them out for us. Whatever we take, we can have printed. It will cost extra for us to have our signs designed. But I even wonder if we, you know, or even if they have the basis of design and somebody tweaks them a little bit, if we could include our youth who are gaining some hands-on experience. Obviously, it's something that we would all approve.
Is that something he can, he could work with maybe the high school art teacher too? I'm just thinking there's, I've seen some of the talent up there and it's-
Absolutely.
Absolutely astounding what the kids are doing.
It is. And that's why I thought, you know what? Why don't we give them the opportunity? You know, maybe they could even have a contest. You know?
I mean, a lot depends on, they have a certain curriculum they have to do, but-
Absolutely. But when you come to graphic design, this is, this is certainly graphic design. I guess is anybody opposed to me continuing with that attempt to touch base face-to-face and give that a whirl and see what happens? Okay. We'll see. But my son even said, oh, he's always looking for stuff like that to do, so we'll see what happens. It is after 5:00. Why don't we go ahead and open our public hearing?
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing now.
In regard to the water rate increase?
Increase, yes.
So thank you.